Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. Welcome everyone to today's meeting. Item number one is the approval of the agenda, I will move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We do have a caller on the line.
Okay. All right.
Are you there Tina?
Yes, I am, yep, Tina Bertrand Woodbury County Treasurer.
All right, thank you Tina, welcome to the meeting.
Thanks.
All right, on to the consent agenda. Items two through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes from the June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Number three is approval of claims. Number four from county treasurer Tina Bertrand, approval of resolution approving abatement of taxes for Woodbury County Iowa. Number five from human resources Melissa Thomas is A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. C, approval of requests to deauthorize county positions. And then number six from Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District, approval of the twenty-eighty agreement between Woodbury County Iowa and Woodbury Soil and Water Conservation District for funding and management of a watershed inspection and maintenance program in Woodbury County Iowa. And with that, I will move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, brings us on to our regular agenda item, from Board Administration Ryan Erickson. It's the approval of resolutions for inter-fund operating transfers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. So with that, Ryan, turn it over to you.
Yeah, we did the majority of these last week, but these two, I just needed to research and verify that they were for fiscal twenty-six and not, had not been done in fiscal twenty-five. So that's what, the first one is the pilot fund of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars to be moved general supplemental for tax reduction.
All right, I will, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
And then the second one was two hundred thousand dollars from the courthouse maintenance fund to general supplemental fund for tax reduction.
All right, I will move that as well.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, all right, any comments or questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, thank you Ryan. With that, we're not at our four thirty-five set time at this moment, so let's move down to item eleven from Sioux City Fire Rescue, Mary Travoka. It's approval of thirty-five, three thousand five hundred and ten dollars from the opioid settlement fund for the Sioux City Fire Rescue to purchase a Safe BVM Solitar Q trainer and supply of the Solitar BVM devices. And so with that, now Mary or Jim, who do you want to come forward? We'll let Jim be in the hot seat today.
She should be up here, she's the expert. Jim Hayden, the MS Director Sioux City Fire. Just want to know, I guess, what questions you guys might have on this.
Right, this is for, this is a request out of our opioid settlement agreement for rescue breathers and ventilation, right, for the, for the rescue.
This is basically a device, there was, there's been studies, they've changed airway studies over the years and recently they found that with the adrenaline of responders and so on, when they're trying to ventilate somebody, we're going way too fast and way too deep sometimes, just because you tend to almost get in pace with your heartbeat is what it used to be. Now we're slowing it down, now we need to slow down the, the flow of air in and out of the lungs and and this device is, is basically the only one on the market that, that allows that. With the opioids, it's not enough to just give some Narcan and, and hope that that works. We need to also support that airway and, and continue to breathe for them to a point. So that's kind of the purpose of this and it kind of falls into that, I don't know if exhibit A was provided for you with what this money can be used for?
Was that, okay. Yes, it was. Jim, with that, we're at our four thirty-five PM set time, so if you can just take a seat real quick.
Absolutely.
Our public hearing and then we'll come right back to this item, okay? All right, thank you. All right, it is four thirty-five PM and so with that, we'll go from Board Administration Heather Vensicle. It's a public hearing, sale of property parcel ending in six zero zero two, AKA twenty twenty-one West First Street. And so with that, first we'll open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to come to speak for or against the sale of this property, please approach the microphone, just state your name and then just any concerns whether you're for or against the sale of this.
Seeing no comments, Mr. Chair, I move the public hearing close.
All right, I'll second that, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Now, we'll open it up for bids for this, for this property, the opening bid is two hundred and forty-four dollars. So with that, if you want to come up and make a bid on that, please come to the microphone, state your name clearly and just, what is your bid? And once again, the opening bid is two hundred and forty-four dollars for this property.
Three hundred and forty.
All right, and what is your name?
Anna E. Ariano.
Can you spell that for me?
A-N-A-H-I. My last name is A-R-E-L-L-A-N-O.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else, please come to the microphone and state your bid, just your name and your bid for this property. All right, anyone else, we don't want to, okay.
Seeing no other bids, I move that the property will be sold to Ani Aralano for three hundred and forty dollars.
I will second that, all right. Motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you, and you can see Heather back there for your paperwork. All right. We still have a few more minutes to our four forty PM set time, so with that, Jim, come on back up here, please. We'll get your steps in, man, somehow or the other. So let's, as we finish here, yes, in the backup was, was the quote from the Safe BVM company, any questions by the board for Jim? Anything regarding this?
No, I think this is appropriate use of the opioid funds and thanks for bringing this item forward and I would move approval.
The only other thing I'd like to add with this is we will have the ability to train other county crews too if they, if they choose to do that. So we'd be happy to, to get them in and kind of show them what we've got.
That'd be much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we got a motion by Nelson.
Second.
All right, second by Dietrich, all right, in discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you very much Sioux City Fire Rescue being here. With that, that brings us to our four forty PM set time. From Planning and Zoning, this is Daniel Priestley. Item A is to conduct the third and final public hearing on the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone from agricultural preservation AP to the general industrial GI zoning district on parcel ending in one zero one-two for new cooperative Inc. And so with that, we'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wants to come to the mic, state your name and please speak whether you're for or against this and any comments you have. So, the public hearing is now open.
Seeing no public comments, Chair, I move the public hearing to be closed.
All right, I'll second that, so motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, with that, moves on to item B. Is to approve the third reading as the final reading of the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone. And with that, I would move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson. Comments, discussion, seeing none, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Item C is adopt the zoning ordinance map amendment rezone from agricultural preservation AP to the general industrial GI zoning district on parcel ending in one zero one-two for new cooperative Inc. So I will, I'll move that.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Dietrich, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I will be abstaining from the vote on this. Our family does, our farm does business with new cooperative, not at this location, but at another site. And so, just in, play transparency, I will just be abstaining for the vote, but I think it's a, a great project and an appropriate result.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so motion by Bintenger, second by Dietrich, all right, with, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, so it passes four zero with Nelson abstaining on that. All right, thank you Dan. Okay. All right, with that, we still have a few minutes before our four forty-five PM set time. So with that, we'll go on to item number twelve. From Woodbury County Fire Association Devon Emick. It's approval to fund a mental health speaker for first responders in the amount of five thousand dollars. So gentlemen, come on up and introduce yourself and tell us about this agenda request.
My name's Ben Howard, do I need to give my address and stuff?
No, just show me only, yep.
Devon Emick Bronson Fire on this County Fire Association.
So what we're up here for is, we both have a really great honor and privilege to serve in a volunteer community. And as everyone in this room probably knows, unfortunately, we had a tragedy that you trained for all your life as a first responder, a lot in this year. And it has changed the world of us as first responders locally. And so Bronson Fire Chief got a hold of me and said, we got to figure something out, we got to do something, there's not. We have access to crisis lines and counselors through city insurances and so forth, but what we don't have is a mental health of someone who's been through it, who can speak and teach that to us and make the awareness. And so, the ask is, is that we get the support, I have ten thousand dollars that was given today and we need fifteen thousand dollars to secure Travis Howes, Devon's going to speak a little bit about who Travis Howes is. But a generous business owner and husband and wife said, I'm all in, ten grand's yours, I checks, checks at his desk tomorrow. So, we owe it to our first responders, full-time or not. Absolutely, the full-time folks of Sioux City, the police department, the sheriff's department, they're all included in this. And sometimes it's not the death that hits somebody, sometimes it's a routine CPR call that somebody says, man, it looked like my grandma or grandpa and that affects them differently. People don't show up to calls and so forth, so I'll let Devon speak a little bit on behalf of what Travis Howes, who he is and, and how he came up with this.
All right, so, I'm the president of our Fire School Association, we have a tri-state Fire School, our association puts on yearly. We're looking at getting a keynote speaker brought in and I reached out to Travis Howes and his message just really hit home with me and he said, you know, chief, he goes, this ain't just for firemen, this is for all first responders. This is for nurses, spouses, military. He goes, this, my event is for everybody. I said, well, we'll move along and get a keynote speaker for our fire school, but I agree with you, but we need to get you and Sioux City for our local first responders as its own event. Travis has been one of the huge fires, Charleston Nine, South Carolina, super sofa store. It was his day off, nine firemen lost their lives that day. He got called in on by the recovery team, he was a combat marine, police officer, he's had to take lives in the line of duty. Like I said, he's been, he's been through the stuff. Now he's the top keynote speaker for, for first responders throughout the nation. We're trying to get him into Sioux City and have a free event for all first responders in the tri-state area, not just Woodbury County. Be, you know, in the tri-state area, like I said, it's going to be open to nurses, spouses, military, Sioux City Fire, Sioux City Police, Woodbury County Sheriff's Office. I've been talking to Woodbury County Sheriff Chad Sheehan, he's all about this guy. He, he's, I got full support behind the sheriff of helping me try to get him in. Dr. Ben, we're running this through our County Fire Association. All the donations, we're a nonprofit organization. Just ask that, with your guys' help and all the ass that we need, it's, I get it, coming to ask you guys for money. Is, you could have different agencies and businesses come and ask you guys for money. But this is for all first responders, all local fire departments in the area, so it's not going to affect one business or one group of people, it's affecting majority of our tri-state area in our county.
All right, with that gentlemen, we're at, we are at our four forty-five set time, so we'll come right back to you, okay? Thank you, yep, just hold tight, thank you. Number ten from Planning and Zoning, Daniel Priestley. Is to conduct the second public hearing for a zoning ordinance text amendment to revise the land use summary table of allowed uses, section three point oh, three point four, to classify borrow pits for earth materials as a conditional use within the agricultural states zoning district. And so with that, we'll open up the public hearing. If you want to come and speak to this issue, whether for or against, please come to the podium, state your name only and just whether you're for or against this and any comments, so the public hearing is now open.
Seeing no public comments, Mr. Chair, I move the public hearing to be closed.
All right, I'll second that, motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Item B for this, for this item is to approve the second reading of the zoning ordinance text amendment. And I will move that.
Second.
All right, motion by Bintenger, second by Nelson, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. All right, thank you Dan. All right, back, go ahead gentlemen, you can come back up, back for number twelve. Let's finish that discussion here.
All right, so, I mean, like I was saying, I put this on the agenda item tonight just to come ask you guys a question of five grand to help, help us out with this. Like I said, we got ten grand from a local donor right now, he books really fast and that's what we're trying to get him just set secured to come in, made of next year, of two thousand twenty-six. If we get this approved tonight, I can book him tomorrow and get him locked in, so. You guys have any questions for me of kind of our mission of behind this or anything like that?
I do like that it's expanded to all first responders in the tri-state.
Yes, yes, and that, and that's what I was talking to Travis is with our fire school that we do and having a keynote speaker, it really hit home that, you know, his message ain't just for firemen. It's for all first responders and that's why, okay, now I put a committee together and try to get going on this and let's have it as its own event. We don't have anything like that in our area and that's kind of what I'm trying to do and bring something big into our area like this to help first responders, because there's really nothing for first responders in this area regarding something like this, so.
All right.
And just to clarify, in case it becomes a question, it's not a public event. It is solely for first responders and their spouses and that's it. Children are not welcome, it is solely for the purpose to teach in the mental health of us as first responders.
Okay, and that was my question, it's not necessarily going to be so much of him just giving a message, but it's really going to be kind of a training and an outreach to help people either deal with mental health issues, PTSD that they're currently dealing with or that they may experience in the line of duty, is that, would that be correct?
Yeah, correct, I mean, it, yeah, it's, you're spot on with that. It, he's lived it, I mean, he recovered nine bodies of his brothers in a fire. And so it's, how do you go home to be a husband, to be a wife, to be a father, a mother and a sibling or whatever your capacity is and how do you function, but also how do you, how do you heal properly mentally? In, in all aspects of life.
Okay. I, I apologize Devon, because I thought that I had seen Travis, but it was another one of his fellow firefighters that I saw. Iowa Farm Bureau had him out at a convention two years ago and, and that was that individual that spoke that time was actually there, was fighting the fire that day and then talked about all the, you know, how everything just went wrong and it's, it's a very sad story. I mean, anybody can read up about Charleston Nine. And so I, I have a little bit of background about what, what these guys are going to be talking about, but you know, the guy we listened to wasn't so much to the mental health as it was just the preparation and just understanding how things went wrong and I, I appreciate that, you know, this guy's more on the, the mental health side of things.
One thing the board could consider to help this mission would be to fill some PTO hours for those in specific departments that would be attending this as a part of their role and responsibility in their jobs, which would apply to several different Woodbury County employees, we've done something like that in the past for another event. So that's something to keep in mind. As for a direct funding of a, I guess you'd call it a down payment on a speaking fee. I see the checkbox has been marked no for review by the county attorney's office, do we know if we have, if we can give to a nonprofit in this way? Because that would be my question.
Yeah, that I don't know, I.
Do you know, we're subject to like
Right.
reporting, feedback, when we do things like that for, for nonprofits and it's not something we've, we've done just because of that and, and also the, you know, the precedent it sets. I'm just trying to think of other ways to support. If it is a permissible use and it's what makes the difference, then I'm, I'm understanding of that, but I just want to make sure that we've had a review of that.
Yeah, that is true, that's a good point.
Would your event be on a Saturday, is that what you were, you were thinking?
Yes, Saturday evening, yeah.
So how would you do the PTO if it was a Saturday? If they, yeah, that's a little tougher.
Yeah, we're looking at the first or second weekend of May right now. I was in context with Travis before the meeting and those are the two dates we have open for next May.
Okay, well.
Because your fire school is in March.
Our fire school is in March, yeah. And May, the reason we're doing it in May is basically that's why it's got open, but May is mental health awareness month as well.
A lot of first responders work, yeah, every day of the week.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chair, is it, if it comes from the, like, the opioid fund, is that, could that go to nonprofit? Because it could kind of tie into, you know, there are, you know, things you guys deal with that people are high on something or it could be tied into opioid abuse and stuff like that.
Potentially, we have to check the settlement uses chart to make sure, but yes, we can give, because we've done that with Agape.
Yeah.
So we could.
Yeah, because that was a question I had, the way the courthouse today was that, would these be opioid fund? Potentially, and we'd have to get, I was, if Joshua was here, I think he'd be able to probably tell us pretty quick, but that'd be another alternative, the potential, we can use that fund for that.
Right, yeah, because I was thinking about using game, yeah, making a motion for gaming funds, but so in light of that, I would say we probably should table this until next week, just to get clarification from our county attorney, just to make sure, yeah.
Good.
So.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you gentlemen, yeah, we'll bring this back for next week, so.
I'll move to, move to table.
All right, second that, motion by Nelson, second by Bintenger, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Next item is, is item number thirteen from Board Supervisors, myself and Mark Nelson, is approval to carry over eighty hours vacation for KS to be used within the next year. Melissa, do you need to speak to this at all, anything you want to say to this? Just, I know this was done last year.
Melissa Thomas, human resources, so we have to have a special agenda item for this since our handbook lays out very distinctly how much vacation can be carried over when it hits your anniversary year, so that's why, to be able to carry over an additional eighty hours requires board action.
Okay, all right, and we, and we did do this last year.
Two years ago.
Two years ago, sorry, two years ago.
True.
Yeah, two years ago, so.
For the same person?
Yeah.
Yes.
Was anything ultimately lost permanently after that or was? Do you recall if they were able to, to use?
What I recall is it ended up, that person took vacation before the anniversary, so didn't actually carry over as much as what was voted on.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by Ung, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero. Thank you Melissa, thank you. All right, item fourteen from Secondary Roads, Low Receivers, it's the approval to amend Woodbury County Secondary Roads Department five-year construction program to allow two bridges to become grant eligible. And Laura, you have a floor.
All right, uh, two weeks ago, we received an email from Iowa DOT saying that Iowa was one of four states that were eligible to receive sixty-five million in additional bridge funding. The bridges had to be, you know, a federal bridge, had to be rated poor, had to have, you know, significant traffic. They would like the bridge to be a standard bridge, so it needed to be under two hundred and fifty feet long. And we, Woodbury County, had two hundred, or twenty bridges fit this description. So, out of that twenty bridges, eighteen of them we requested funding for, because two of them had just recently been built, we didn't ask for funding for those. So what I'm asking today is, we are eligible for two bridges. They narrowed it down to a hundred and twenty-eight and then we made the final cut of twenty-seven bridges in Iowa that would possibly be able to get funded from the feds through the Iowa DOT. So, we currently have eighty-eight bridges rated poor. So anytime you can get additional funding for those bridges, I think you jump through the hoops. So what I'm asking you is to, I know we have a five-year program, I know that program is set up and it's very important to keep that program, but when you can get, you know, a million dollars each for each one of these bridges, I feel like that's a priority and those bridges should come in. These bridges would probably be built in twenty twenty-seven. And they're both really close together, near Bronson on D twenty-five, so. Just looking for approval to add them into our program, because when you can get free two million dollars, I say, let's do it, so.
Well, Stephanie, any questions from the board?
I would move it.
Second. All right, motion by Nelson, second by Carper, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you Laura.
Uh, there probably will be additional things that I need from the board. Maybe an agreement or something like that, but this, these bridges might come up again, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you Laura. All right, item fifteen, from Board Supervisors, Supervisor Ung, it's approval of retroactive supplemental pay for extra duties performed to the employee filling appointed deputy auditor position from eight twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four to January first, two thousand twenty-five. With that, turn it over to you.
Uh, this is not something the board is required to do, but I think it is something that the board should do. This refers to work done after the unfortunate passing of our prior finance director, Dennis Butler. The work was performed by many people, I'll just say that, that, that helped to fill that void, but none in such a capacity or under such duress as, who is the person who is now our county auditor, Michelle Scaff. I was involved in that process of, of seeking and, and interviewing and, and hiring a replacement and I know that a lot of that discussion that I and his other board members had to consider was, you know, how, of, what impact this would have on Dr. Scaff as, as she adjusts to a new role, helps us to put together a budget proposal and helps us to find answers to all of our budget questions in the midst of all of this upheaval. So this is not a situation that anyone can say is duplicated in any other department, I don't think it opens any can of worms. This is something that is warranted and, and as for the amount, it's related to a discussion the board had earlier regarding the compensation board recommendation for a five thousand dollar stipend to auditor Scaff for this work done in two thousand twenty-four. Now, that's not something we can do legally, we were told as a board that we are not allowed to adjust the pay of an elected official in that way beyond the percentage increase and so what this action the percentage increase. And so what this action would do is to give retroactive, it's called supplemental pay, to the employee that was then an appointed deputy in the auditor's office. And I think that's warranted, and I think the board's already voiced consensus for, for that amount. It doesn't have to be five thousand, but I'm, that's, to be transparent, why I'm recommending that. We do need to understand it's not an increase to the permanent wage. This is a supplement. And this is allowable. I did check with the county attorney's office, and supplemental pay has been defined by the Iowa Supreme Court as pay based upon extra services and directly related to the time, skill, and nature of the additional services. And so if the board decides that this is an amount that fits that description, and we do so through this fashion, then it is permissible. And again, I think it's something that is, is the right thing for the board to do. This was an extraordinary circumstance, and certainly a vital, a vital position that performed for us during the budgeting process, so.
Yeah. No, I wholly agree, and, yeah, our auditor did excellent. Thank you, Michelle, for your hard work. I know there was, there were some days we all saw you pretty frazzled. But I agree with Supervisor Young, yes, did a yeoman's work and did an excellent job and being sure to steer the board during that budget time. So I think it's duly, duly earned. So I'd be in favor of it.
Well, thanks for putting the item on. And Michelle, thanks for all your continued hard work and all the extra hard work you put in last fall. And then, you know, it didn't stop then. You know, we hired a great new budget director, but someone had to get him started too, and you did that as well. So very appreciative of your, of your time and your sacrifice for the, the betterment of the, of the county government and essentially our taxpayers. And so I'm very supportive of this. And with that, I would move it.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Nelson, second by Ung. Any discussion?
One more.
Sure.
Discussion point, I guess, if anyone in the public is wondering why now, the reason is because we were busy. So we got around to it when we got around to it.
Well said, Matthew. Good point. All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. I think, I think we can give a, can we give a round?
I just want to say.
Which applies to your work last year.
Yes, last year, as I was deputy, I.
Even if you didn't win, we still would have appreciated.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate your appreciation. Thank you. It means a lot to me.
All right. On to number sixteen from the Board Supervisors, just myself. As you saw in the backup, these are just two letters of support. Agape Community Services and Moville Community Development Authority, Inc. are both applying for grants, and they just needed letters of supports. And so anyhow, each of these will be approved individually. So I'll move the approval of a letter of support for Agape Community Services.
Second.
All right. Motion by Benjir, second by Carper. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Item B is the approval of a letter of support for the Moville Community Development Authority, Inc. And I will move that. Second. All right. Motion by Benjir, second by Nelson. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes five zero. And just for the public's information, these were board-approved items back during the last year that we approved. And so these are just official letters of support to the grant organizations, so. All right, so that's, that one's done. On to number seventeen, reports on committee meetings, if there is any.
I do.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Zoning committee meeting was, meeting was held on Monday night. And again, the topic of nuclear, possible nuclear facility that would be put up in Woodbury County was on the agenda. And we had a consider, we're considering the safety of Woodbury County and its location, and we wanted to have a ten-mile notification in that to let people know that this would, this is a possibility. Also, it'd be in an industrial area south of the airport, and this nuclear facility and possible waste storage facility would be in the works for Woodbury County. The other item that came up was a fourteen-by-forty-eight LED sign that would be on Highway twenty in Charles. And some people called in and were concerned about that. This would be a V-shaped billboard that would be lit up on Highway twenty. And so those were some concerns that came up on that. So, and if maybe Mr. Priestley would like to add something, maybe can do that in citizen concerns, so.
All right. Any other reports and committees? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number eighteen, citizen concerns. Come on, Dan. Come on, Dan.
I'd like to add to or complement what our liaison supervisor Carper had mentioned. The zoning commission last night, I can say informally, had their last hearing on the nuclear energy. And there will, there will be a, you'll, we'll ask you to receive their official recommendation. What it is, is it's a conditional use permit process that adds the nuclear energy facilities and nuclear waste storage to the land use summary table for general industrial districts only. So it kind of piggybacks off of the existing conditional use permit process. The other item that the commission looked at is Iowa Code, I think it was Senate File five ninety-two, changed the zoning law for accessory dwellings on a parcel of property. Our county is restrictive on that with the ordinance, and so we looked at a housekeeping measure to amend the ordinance to complement Iowa Code, to allow for the second dwelling on a property, which has a regulation of one thousand square feet or fifty percent of the size of an existing dwelling on the property, whichever is greater for that regulation. Supervisor Carper also mentioned the LED billboard. That is a, going through a conditional use permit process that will go to the Board of Adjustment on July seventh at five o'clock PM. It's, as you referenced, it's south of Highway twenty and on the east side of Charles Avenue there. And then the other item that was, the Board of Adjustment on June second tabled the Morningside College baseball field until July seventh. So that will come back before the board, for them to look through some items that were directly addressed there. But lots of items, but please be expecting there'll be a couple of recommendations, and we'll probably be asking to schedule the three public hearings on the nuclear, as well as the accessory dwellings.
All right. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
All right. Any other citizen concerns?
Chair, Chair, I did notice something on the letter for the Moville Community Development. The date that it was passed by the board is wrong. It says March thirteenth, and it should be May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, okay. Thank you for that. We will get that done. Okay.
Are we going to need to have that signed by everybody before
Mm-hmm.
Monday?
By, well, by Monday, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Stop in the board office?
Yeah. Yeah. Stop in the board office and sign it. All right. Any other citizen concerns? I know everyone's looking at Doyle. Nothing from Doyle. All right. Moving on, number nineteen, board concerns. Anything board concerns? Go ahead.
I was pleased to see the Journal print a, a nice story about our weed commissioner. Had a five-question story. A lot of people don't know that we have a weed commissioner, but he's doing a great job. And a lot of people don't know all the work that goes into it. He's having a one-man department. So appreciate that highlight. Another thing, I don't know if we'd want to save a week, and if Joshua was willing to answer that question we had earlier on the agenda item.
Oh, that's true.
We still are in the agenda.
True. Good point.
Unless you're attending as, as a citizen, Joshua, not as the board's legal. I mean, you can put on whatever hat you want.
I had a court hearing that ran late. So that's why I came in late and backed.
No worries.
Yes, we have, we do have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You want to take them from your seat or the podium or come up here?
So, Michelle, will we need a motion to reconsider? Or is this, we're in the same meeting, we can bring that back, correct? That motion?
Joshua, I, I believe the answer here is that you can bring it back. What he's referring to is on item. Item number twelve. They wanted to consult with you before awarding anything to a nonprofit agency to see if this was, and they tabled it, they made motion to table it until next week.
Well, they can reconsider the motion to table, although I'm not sure if we, if I'll have an answer tonight or not. So, but maybe we can just talk a little bit about what the concerns were, what the questions were.
Sure. So do, do we need to have a motion reconsidered and discussed?
So only if we're going to do something different than what we previously did. So, but I think that it, it's still fair game for discussion since it's on the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, the concern was that the request is, a five thousand dollar request for a speaker for, for the Woodbury County Fire Association, which is a nonprofit. The question is brought up by Supervisor Young was, are we restricted from giving to nonprofits? Is there anything that would hinder us, the code, or, or any laws, or do, or would it be better to potentially see if there's an opioid supplement fund used for this?
If it would fit under the opioid funding, that might be a better route to go. I know that we've, this is something that we dealt with a few years back.
Right.
Where there's certain, you know, any, any expenditure that we make has a, a public purpose. And then beyond that, the state auditor has said that there should be some sort of a contract for services with certain measurable deliverables. We shouldn't really do just like a, a donation type of thing if it's coming from taxpayer funds. If there's another source of funds that could possibly be used, then it might be a, a possibility. So I don't know what the funding source was that was being contemplated.
We had discussed gaming, but then we talked about if, if this would be an opioid-appropriate expenditure. In essence, what it is, is it's a, a training into mental health and PTSD and, you know, the, the precursor signs, you know, how to deal with it if you have it, if you're dealing with it, those types of things for all first responders, fire, EMS, nurses, police. And so that was our, what we were wondering as far as if opioid would be appropriate.
Sorry, I'm going, I'm going to budge right in here. On item A of the exhibit that they produced, there's a provision for wellness and support services for first responders, and that probably fits really well with, with their intent. Sorry.
You're fine. Thank you.
Okay. Jim, what was that again, which, on the settlement you switched page? Give me that number again, please.
Sorry, that's on page E thirteen, under I.
E thirteen.
And it's item number two.
Okay. Okay.
So assuming there is part of the program that, you know, addresses the effects of opiates, it not being a public pur, you know, not being a public purpose, not being open to the public, does that mean that all funding sources would not be allowed, or only property tax dollars? This would be, this would be for, you know, members of a, of a profession, not the public?
Well, it doesn't necessarily need to be open to the public to be a public purpose for the funding. I mean, that, obviously, the first responders, they are employed, and we can, we can do training for other first responders that aren't open to the public. So I, I don't necessarily see that as an obstacle. I would feel maybe a little more comfortable if I, if I did have some time to look into it and get back with you guys.
Sure.
So I think tabling it might be appropriate still. I, I know these gentlemen are here tonight, and I, I don't know that we would necessarily need them to come back if it's kind of internal on our end as far as figuring out what the funding source could be and how to make it work. But like I said, I'd feel more comfortable if, if I could look at things a little bit and.
Sure.
Well, it sounds like the opioid might be a legitimate pathway, so I would say, we'll just table it and, and ask you to please review that, Joshua, and we can get it on the agenda for next week. That would be wonderful.
All right. I'll put it on the agenda. Okay. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, John.
And I was, another thing, if it's like a nonprofit deal, like, is it a thing that give the funds to the sheriff, or the sheriff's office, and they come help us? So you guys aren't donating to the nonprofit? So like, how we're doing it through the nonprofit is for business organizations to get their tax return as a write-off by helping first responders.
Yeah. Well, sheriff's office is still Woodbury County government.
Yeah.
I don't know. It's a question.
Yeah. We'll probably say officially no, just to be in the record.
Yeah. I mean, we'll take a look at what the different options are. I mean, ultimately, I, I think the board wants to help you out if we can, and we want to make sure that we do it in a, in a legal manner. So that's what we'll look at, and hopefully we can come up with something that works for everybody.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll be in touch, yep. All right. Anyone else?
I got one item.
Sure.
The Woodbury County Farm Bureau tractor ride fundraiser for Sew and Dig the Classroom is on Saturday. I put that on. I think this is our seventh annual. Last year, we had to cancel it because it was the week of the flood in Correctionville and Riverside. So we had obviously a lot going on that week, but looking forward to a good ride Saturday. We're gonna, it's kind of the ghost towns of Woodbury County, I'm calling it. We're gonna be going through six or seven either villages or prior communities. So it'll be like a time, hopefully raise some, some funds for Sew and Dig the Classroom, which is a nonprofit that works here, and in other counties, North Los Iowa. But you can catch us in Sloan about, from noon to one. The tractors should be lined up on Main Street. And so if you, if you see us, please wave, but slow down, and, and we hope to have a nice, a nice day. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other concerns, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.